That clock.
Wizard.
I think it's new battery. Nine. See?
Ready to go.
Ready Regina? You ready?
All right, I'd like to call the order, the or official meeting dated today, August twenty six. Jacob, you want to lead us in invocation, please?
Absolutely. You know, it's fun, the invocation and we'll pray in just a second, but invocation is meant to be an edification for the board. That's the purpose of it. And I was thinking about what would edify us this morning? And I wanted to share something that was really edifying to our family and I hope is edifying to your families as well. It's a book that, you know, families are back in school. Fall sports are back. Everybody's active and getting back into their routines. And on, you know, Friday nights, you have Friday night lights. We have a lot of athletes in our family and, you know, our boys love to go watch the big boys when they're little, you know, elementary school, they love to watch the big guys play under the lights. And it was big. They'd have all their friends with them. And then custom, customarily, a lot of them would come home with us that night and spend the night at our house. And then we do a fun, big breakfast the next morning. And Mrs. Bonnema would, she'd get the, you know, the pancakes going and the bacon would be smelling good. And we usually send a couple of the boys out to go get eggs from the chickens and, you know, just have a fun morning together. And there was a book that we used that became kind of popular amongst all the kids of why they wanted to come spend the night as well at our place. Because it had short stories in it. And they always knew that Mr. Bonnema would change the names of the characters and recast them to the boys that were around the table. And the book is called Sticky Situations. Have any of you other commissioners heard of Sticky Situations before? Heard of them? Yeah. Some of us have been in some sticky situations. Yeah. So Sticky Situations is a devotional. It's three hundred and sixty-five devotionals for elementary age kids. And so they're, they're, they're short, one-pagers, really fun, just simple truths that we could share around the table. And, and I love to, you know, have this moment with the boys because it always opened up different conversations with my girls as well. So this morning I'm going to do that with you guys, if you don't mind. And, and, and I'm going to recast the characters with ours, right? So I'm gonna, don't worry, Joe.
Getting worried.
I'm looking at George Ma. So, so we're gonna have some fun. So this one is titled Hoop Dreams. And you got to remember, I've got some boys that, you know, this spoke right to their hearts. So it's the final seconds of the basketball game and Commissioner George Ma is having a great game. Everything seems to be going for him tonight. The game is close. However, it comes down to the last few seconds and Commissioner Bruegger passes the ball to Commissioner George Ma. And he shoots it in and scores the winning basket. The crowd goes wild and all of Commissioner George Ma's teammates surround him and give him high fives. After the game, just about everyone comes up and tells Commissioner George Ma how great he was. Commissioner George Ma goes home feeling really good about himself. Now that he's the star, what should he do? So this is where it gets fun because my boys always love to kind of find out, you know, what are the wrong answers? And then claim that their sibling would do that, right? So you've got four options here. Should Commissioner George Ma, A, keep practicing hard and play with teamwork? After all, Commissioner Bruegger did pass him the ball. B, feel really proud of himself and begin to hang around with only the kids who think he's cool. C, think he's the new Michael Jordan and start shooting all the time. Or D, tell everyone, see you at the slam dunk contest. Or E, start taking applications for the Commissioner George Ma Fan Club. And the thing that we loved about this is that, you know, they'd have a little bit of fun discussing about, you know, different experience that they've had with their friends. And, you know, if this, how this was relevant to them. But then it also pulls them back to the good book. It pulls them back to Proverbs in this case. And it says, for help knowing what Commissioner George Ma should do, read Proverbs twenty seven two. So let's go there for a second. Proverbs twenty seven two says, let someone else praise you and not your own mouth, an outsider, and not your own lips. And these are just good, simple truths, good reminders of how we are to go through life, how we're supposed to lift up others. Because that's upon us when we see somebody else doing something well, to praise them, pat them on the back, tell them a good job and encourage more. So I think President Kennedy said that victory has a thousand fathers and failure is an orphan. And life can be that way, you know, and it's important for us to lift up those that are, you know, struggling with failure as well. So I wanted to share that, that memory. I know none of us, I don't believe, have elementary school kids right now. But your kids will soon have some because we're at that stage of life. And hopefully it can pass on this wonderful book called Sticky Situations to your families. Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the cool weather and the rain. Thank you for our farmers. We thank you for the land that you blessed us called Ottawa County. Lord, we thank you for the people in it. We pray a blessing on them that you hear their needs, that you meet their needs. Lord, today we pray for two things. We pray for wisdom, your wisdom, and we pray for favor. Wisdom, as we consider the names to vote for, to be the next administrator, to interview, to be the next administrator of Ottawa County. And then favor with those people that we have a good connection with and that we come out with the outcome that you would bless. And Lord, we care deeply for this county. We thank you for the opportunity to be public servants to it. And we pray all these things in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Berry.
Mr. George Ma.
Here.
Mr. Zalstra.
Yeah.
Mr. Bonnema.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mrs. Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Teeples.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Here.
Mr. Kyers.
Here.
Mr. Bruegger.
Here.
And Mrs. Mettoma.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have quorum.
Thank you very much. Just like to announce that I'm appointing Kenneth Bruin to the Housing Commission seat, effective immediately through the term ending December thirty-one, two thousand and thirty. Next, we have Chief Judge Protam Craig Bunce from the fifty-eighth District Court. Judge, welcome.
Thank you.
He's gonna give his annual report.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I know many of you, we've met, but those listening online might not know who I am. I am Craig Bunce. I'm the District Court Judge from the Grand Haven District Court. And many of you know the District Court structure in Ottawa County, but for those listening online, we have four separate district courts in Ottawa County. We have a Hudsonville District Court where Judge Judy Mulder sits. And we have two district courts in our Holland location where Judge Brad Canall and Judge Juanita Boca Negra sit as district court judges. So the county has four district court judges currently. Looking at maybe changing that in future, we'll see where that progresses. But once again, good morning and thank you for the opportunity to present the work of the District Court. I think in your package, you would have received already the Anna Report, the two thousand and twenty-four Anna Report of our court. And I'd like to just make public thanks to our District Court Administrator Lori Catalino and our Director of Probation Alma Valenzuela for helping putting all that data together for you in a real easy format to understand. And thank you for all your time in doing that. Any detailed questions you may have about it, I'm going to defer to them. So we'll, we'll work through this together. You'll find several statistics and case trends throughout the report. And I'll highlight a few of those numbers. However, I'd like to preface that with a focus on a couple of statements from our current vision statement. You can find that on page three. One of those statements provides, the District Court seeks to promote a safe community, identify areas where intervention is necessary, network with other departments and agencies to persuade behavioral change. And second, to ensure that the court procedures and structures best facilitate the expedient and economic resolution of matters before the court. In short, the District Court is in the people business. While it's important to evaluate numbers, we can't forget that those numbers represent people's lives on a daily basis. Whether it's a tenant struggling to make a rent, make rent payment to maintain their home, deciding whether to pay the utility bill or deciding whether to take that money and buy some groceries for the refrigerator. Those are real things that we deal with at District Court. Or a landlord trying to make sure that his investment stays viable so they can keep providing housing to our local communities. Or a family that's separated due to domestic violence. Oftentimes, when someone is charged with domestic violence, the alleged perpetrator is required to leave that house for the time while the case is pending. And that causes a great disruption to the family unit. Or those families that are dealing with, broken families due to addiction or abusive behavior. I think all of us that are on the table can understand how that impacts families directly. And then even down to the dog owner, who is told that they have to put their dog down because he was deemed to be a vicious dog. Never a fun time in District Court. There are some, however, major initiatives I want to go over with you about two thousand and twenty-four. In two thousand and twenty-four, we did transition our case management systems in both the District Court portion and in the District Court probation portion of the court. We said goodbye to our beloved AS four hundred, which was old and ancient, but worked like a charm for many of us. It had some integrations that were just unknown until we had to do without it. We are now in a new system, which is providing some great benefits for statewide reporting purposes. But we lost a lot of interconnectivity with our local departments as a result. We're trying to build some of those back in, but you can imagine when your phone comes up and says it's time to install a new program, software program, I hesitate. I usually delay, delay, delay because I like the way my format looks already. I wait. Well, our staff couldn't wait anymore. We had a transition. And in that transition came a lot of frustration, a lot of anxiety and a lot of hard work. And I want to take this time to thank our staff for all the work that they did in implementing the new system in the District Court. In two thousand and twenty-four, we held our biannual staff enrichment meeting where we learned more about how AI will impact the courts directly. We learned how to, we did some teamwork exercises to learn how to continue to try to promote unity within our offices. The District Court, having different locations, but all being one court, is sometimes a struggle to, to keep the unity amongst the staff. And so it's important for us to get together, I think, at least on a biannual basis, to try to promote that unity. Because when we work together as a team, as Mr. Bonnema mentioned earlier, it works a lot better than when you're working separately. In two thousand and twenty-four, we began a new Michigan Supreme Court continuing education requirement for the judges and the magistrates. Historically, judges and magistrates did not have a requirement of education, ongoing education. Now we did. Many of us have to stay up on the law, of course. You'd like the judges to be up to date on the law. But there was no actual requirement for that. And in two thousand and twenty-four, the Supreme Court imposed a new plan which requires twenty-four credit hours every two years for judges and magistrates to perform. And so judges and magistrates across the state have been seeking out the online seminars, the in-person seminars to get their credit hours in place. In two thousand and twenty-four, we also onboarded three new chief clerks. Each court location has a chief clerk that manages the clerical operations of the court. And you can imagine when you take your teams and you put a new person in place of the team, things change. People have a different way of handling matters. People have to learn their new roles. And when you install three new chief clerks, that was quite a change for, in one year's time. But we've had people that were from within our organization that took on those leadership roles. And I can say that the transition has went well. Still learning, still growing, but it's went well. As you read through our report, you'll see that we report on caseload trends over a five-year period of time. And in looking at those trends, we saw that our general case, civil caseload, saw an increase from, of twenty-three percent. Our landlord-tenant dockets were on par over the last several years. Most of the landlord-tenant filings are based on non-payment of rent versus termination. And that's important from a judicial standpoint and from a community standpoint, I think. When a case comes for non-payment of rent, it's basically telling the tenant, you gotta get your rent paid and you get the right to stay if you do that. A termination case is just what it sounds like. The landlord no longer wants to lease that property to that particular tenant and wants to bring clothes to that, which causes the tenant and that family to have to move. So having more non-payment cases filed is a better position for the community than termination cases. As all else recognize, criminal behavior doesn't occur just from eight to five o'clock. Wish it would, but it doesn't. So we have a magistrate and a judge who is on call twenty-four seven. After our calls, our weekend duty involves review of warrant requests and bond determinations. Now, in two thousand and twenty-four, between the Holland and the Grand Haven Courts, there were five hundred and forty-nine search warrant requests. And one hundred and fourteen of those were done after hours. So that's a judge that gets the call at three o'clock in the morning saying, we have a drunk driver. Judge, we want to get the blood test results. Can you help us with that? And so we have somebody on call all year doing that. Our misdemeanor filings, which misdemeanors for those who are listening online are crimes that are punishable by less than one year. They remain constant over the last five years. So we didn't see any noticeable change in that, in the number of those. Our felony files, filings, felony is anything that's punishable by more than one year. We saw an approximate seven percent increase in two thousand and twenty-three. Like District Court, the District Court Probation Department transitioned to a new case processing system as well. And again, it came with anxiety and difficulty in transition. And difficult from their perspective because there was expectations of the district judges that the case flow would continue on their probation files in spite of the new transition to the new system. And I will say that the probation office and their, their probation agents stepped up to the game as well and did a great job in that transition. In two thousand and twenty-four, probation officers began supervising nine hundred and eighty individuals. So in two thousand and twenty-four alone, nine hundred and eighty additional individuals were placed on probation. Now that's, you know, on top of the probation numbers that came from two thousand and twenty-three because probation isn't just a, a year in, calendar year, on or off. Probation extends from the time of sentence to however long the judge places that individual on probation. Meanwhile, while they were supervising that many individuals, they completed one thousand three hundred and thirty-five pre-sentence investigations. So on many misdemeanor cases, judges will ask for a pre-sentence investigation so that a judge can have a better understanding of what the background of that particular individual is, how that individual is interacting with the family. Are there some needs that are there for counseling or addictive abusive behavior that we have to address? And that pre-sentence report gives us all that information so we can make a, a well-judged sentence. They did three thousand eight hundred and twenty-six home checks. It's actually going into the physical home of somebody, searching through the house to make sure that they're complying with orders of no contact, no alcohol and, and that their home life is in a stable condition. They conducted a hun, one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine bond screens. So on many cases that come before the court on crimes, we need to have a bond screen done so that we can set the appropriate bond while the case is still pending. And that's a function that our probation office does for us as well. Our probation staff also follows the cases for bond review all the way through the end of the case to a conviction. That's not just misdemeanor cases. Our District Court Probation Office follows those bond developments over the course of a felony file as well. So our bond, our probation agents are often in the circuit court level, testifying as to compliance or non-compliance with certain bond conditions as well. Our probation collected, office collected and analyzed fifty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-one samples, urine samples over the year. It's a lot of samples to have to go through. But that is something that's very important to a judge, to make sure that the probation terms are being complied with, that the bond terms are being complied with, to help provide a safe community. Now, we use several new types of technology that they knew they've been in place for a while, but we use a continuing, continuous alcohol monitor called a CAM unit. And on our CAM units over two thousand and twenty-four, they recorded nine hundred and six thousand one hundred and four separate readings on individuals that were placed on CAM. We also monitor alcohol consumption through what's called a breath alcohol monitor. That's a handheld breath machine that we require people that are on bond or on probation to blow into four or five times throughout the day and night to prove that they're not consuming alcohol. On those, we had forty-seven thousand and fifty tests throughout the year, two thousand and twenty-four. We also utilize global positioning systems, a GPS monitor, an ankle bracelet on individuals. Oftentimes in domestic violence situations where we're not certain that the individual can be out safe and stay away from an individual. So we place the GPS on a particular individual so that they can't go within a five-mile radius of maybe the home where the assault occurred, providing a safe place for the victim to reside while the case is pending. In those GPS cases, we had ten million, ten point nine million location points, constantly evaluating people and where they are throughout the county. Now, while this closer monitoring can promote compliance and lead to safer communities, it also can result in higher reporting of bond violations, of course. This in turn results in more staff and docket time needed to address those violations. So while oftentimes we think technology will speed up and, and help us in society, it actually might create additional work for us to do. And that's a good thing in this regard. Now, in addition to providing general probation oversight, our probation department takes a lead role in staffing each of our treatment courts. Currently, the District Court operates a sobriety treatment court docket out of Grand Haven, two sobriety treatment court dockets out of Holland, and that's what Judge Boca Negra runs, and a sobriety treatment court out of Hudsonville. And that's where Judge Mulder runs. Now Judge Canall also runs a treatment court. It's called our ten ninety courts to help those individuals dealing with mental illness and to help with their treatment plans and to keep them on a better path to prevent the, the cycle of going back into the court system after not complying with their medical needs. Our treatment courts continue to perform better than statewide averages. You can see that in the report and we're proud of that. And, and I'd like to say that that's not just attributed to the work that each of the treatment court team members do. While it is, it's also in part due to the dedication that the participants that are in the program stepped up to. They wanted to make a change in their life. They're tired of where they're, they've been and they want to make a change for their family. So I think it's, it's the whole team approach, it's the participants' approach that caused us to have a better than statewide average on recidivism. Our Director of Probation, Alma Valenzuela, also keeps Ottawa County Community Corrections Advisory Board on task. The board and its goals were established under Public Act five eleven in nineteen eighty-eight. The board continues to review the treatment courts, use cognitive behavioral therapy, bond risk assessment, offender assessment, and pre-trial services and other rehabilitative services to reduce prison overcrowding while promoting a safer community with healthy fam, with healthier families in mind. Our probation staff also oversees our court services division. They monitor compliance with court-ordered jail alternative work service programs. Jail alternative work service programs are utilized instead of breaking the family up. When you put somebody in jail, let's say I decide to put somebody in jail for thirty days. There are not many employers that will keep their job available to them when they get out. Now I can handle that in a different way and I can order jail alternative work service program. That's a community service that I require people to show up on Saturdays to put a full day's work of community service work in. And they may receive three to five different jail days, jail alternative work service days in place of a thirty-day jail sentence. And what that does then is it keeps that individual connected to their job during the week so they can provide for their family and keep that family unit stable. But it also requires them to give something back for what actions they've done to the county. And so that's our JAWS program. We also have a straight community service program, which is a department that is run where we contract with or, or work with other agencies throughout the community who need work done through volunteerism. And our volunteerism through our community service program provided in two thousand and four, a value added to the community of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars worth of service. Now that's based on an hourly rate of twelve dollars and forty-eight cents. Our JAWS program gave back to the community ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars worth of work. I think those are important numbers. I think that shows that the court is dedicated to making sure people give back for what they've done. Now, again, while the review of this data is important for everyday functioning and planning purposes, I want us all to remember that the District Court is about people. We're in the people business. What we need to do and what I need to remember is that the impact of my decisions and our decisions impact individuals, impact their families, and as a result, impacts our greater community. I'll be open to any questions if anybody has any.
Judge, thanks for, again, for being here. You mentioned early on the use of AI coming into the court system. Could you talk a little bit about how you're implementing it, using it, how it's been beneficial to your work? And then I have one other question.
Sure. I'm, I'm taking that approach a little bit cautiously. I've seen some AI functions in the court through the, the pleadings and filings that are coming in. We're seeing improper litigants that are coming in, putting together some pretty darn good pleadings. And I know that's not their own makeup. And so it's an AI-generated pleading. And for the most part, some of those can come in and actually organize their thoughts better than what they might have been able to do on their own. But I'm also mindful that attorneys can also utilize AI to create their briefs and arguments. And while there are many attorneys that are fine upstanding attorneys and check their work, some use AI, I think, to facilitate a cleaner, faster approach to their practice. And so it's my role to check that work. And I fortunately have some old books yet on my shelf up in Grand Haven that has all the cases. It's not a digital format. And so when I see a case site in a brief, I'm able to go to my book, look in the book to see if that site actually relates to what they've quoted in their brief. And I have found cases, briefs, where they have not. AI is a great tool, but AI also tries to just put in what it thinks it needs to put in based on this large database. And sometimes it's not accurate. And as a judge, I think it's my requirement to make sure that what's being presented to me is accurate law. So that's how it's coming to play for me so far.
Thank you for your dedication and diligence to make sure that the law is actually being carried out. So a follow-up question on a different topic. There's community service hours that different people have to serve. Something that Ottawa County did in the past, and I brought up to a couple of different folks along my time as a commissioner, is bringing back the opportunity for those that are serving community service hours to choose to do it by picking up trash along our motorways and making, you know, our, our streams cleaner, that type, versus sitting inside of a closed facility. Wanted to get your opinion on that, see what your thoughts are. I know there's always a cost benefit manpower conversation that happens around that. But just from your perspective, is that something you would support?
I support helping the community with community service hours, absolutely. I'll tell you that our JAWS placement program has oftentimes work outside in the communities. Many of our JAWS placements are out in our cemeteries, cleaning up our cemeteries. So that does occur. I think the program that you might be referencing might have been a sheriff's department program long ago where they would be out picking up litter along the highways. That program, I don't believe, is in place at this point in time, but we do facilitate some of those bigger group events through our JAWS program.
And they even offered lawn care, like they would weed eat and mow the cemeteries, you know? And, and now we're hiring outside agents to do that at a much higher cost. So I just wonder if that's something we should revisit and if you think that the people that you're working with would choose to do it, then maybe we would have more conversations around that.
So in our sobriety treatment court, there are times when we highly evaluate them. We keep constant tabs on their use or non-use of alcohol and their compliance with other technical parts of the program. And if they have non-compliance, we bring them in for a probation violation or an informal sanction. I will oftentimes order JAWS for that sanction. And I will ask them when they come back after their JAWS service, where did you? And I will ask them when they come back after their JAWS service, where did you work? Well, I was on the beach picking up trash this past weekend. So, well, you had nice weather, that was a pretty nice place to be. Others would say I weed whipped in our cemeteries. And this one young lady who was in our sobriety treatment court, very, very small of stature, said my arms are sore from holding that weed whip all day long. It's the first time she's ever had to do something like that. So those things and those activities are occurring, maybe not on as big of a scale as you might have seen in the past.
Years ago, I worked for a number of nonprofits and one in Spring Lake called Love Inc., I love in the name of Christ at the time. And there were a number of community service individuals who came in to volunteer their time in our thrift store in Spring Lake. And the ones that I got to interact with did a phenomenal job. And the difference that they made for our small nonprofit, which was focused on reselling goods, they helped us raise thousands of dollars for the community that went into our food pantry that went in to cover housing and utility costs. So the number that you shared, I think in some cases could be significantly higher on their impact as far as a dollar amount. So thank you for doing that and looking for opportunities for our members to serve. Because as you pointed out, they get an opportunity as well to be out in the community, but also to interact with people that they might not have otherwise interacted with. And I think that's an awesome opportunity.
Thank you for sharing that. I think ordering community service at any level is a good thing. We've noticed, a lot of nonprofits have noticed since COVID, a significant decline in volunteerism. And so a lot of our nonprofits are struggling to keep, a lot of our nonprofits survive on volunteerism. And so we need to make sure that we build into that volunteer, volunteerism aspect. And when I put somebody on probation and order community service, sometimes it's also just to get them thinking beyond themselves. Because I think oftentimes if we just focus on ourselves, we only look at our problems. If we look at other people, we look at other people's issues, we get out there and we give back, we live a much richer life and as a result, the community has benefited. So, thank you.
Just one quick question. Are you seeing organizations step up to help fill the continuing education requirements? Is there innovation in that space or is it developing?
The, the continued education has, has always been there. I don't see that that's been a problem to find the sources for continuing education. I think that when the state put the program in place, they had to validate the, the services that were out there to make sure they were quality programs to be a part of. And so that process is ongoing yet. We do have a couple of associations that put on good one day or three day seminars and you're able to get probably about half of your required credits from that. And then the Supreme Court requires every two years that all judges meet for an annual conference, and that also provides an opportunity for some of those credit hours. So there's good programs out there.
Great. Ellison.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just one question. I am wondering, do you have any overlap with programs such as JAWS with also connecting them at the same time if there's interest in receiving counseling, for example, or getting them services that they might need because of the addiction? Maybe it's not just a one-time deal. Are there any overlaps such as that?
Absolutely. So when I put, place somebody on probation, I create a what's called probation order and it says everything they have to do while they're on probation to the court. JAWS is just one line of that probation. So then there's other things in there about going to counseling as directed, going to AA so many times throughout the week, different aspects of programming that we put into people. Cognitive behavioral therapy is another program that I'll oftentimes check on my probation terms. It's a, a course where you go through, and I think every one of us should probably go through the course. It teaches us how our brain works, why we think and how we make decisions so that we make better choices in the future. So a lot of that's happening.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Not really questions, but I just want to thank you for the work that you and your staff do in regards to the sobriety treatment programs. And, you know, I, what, what you guys do to help walk people back to health is important for safety, but it's also so important for our families. And so just thank you for that work.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Judge, maybe you could take us a couple of seconds and minutes and explain the distinction between what the district court does versus a circuit court. This is a great educational opportunity and I, I think it's, people miss that, missed that understanding. So can you take a couple of seconds and explain something?
Sure. So our judicial system has several different levels to it. We have two different trial courts systems. We have the district court level and we have the circuit court level. District court will handle claims that are civil in nature of $25,000 or less. It will also handle all the summary proceedings. So any commercial lease, any residential lease will all be dealt with in the district court. So if you have a commercial lease over a strip mall that tenants didn't take care of their payments, that would come to district court. And that could be over value of 25,000, but that would still stay in the district court as a summary proceedings action. The district court also handles small claims where people can come in without attorneys to handle their claims and try to get quick resolution to their disputes. The circuit court handles any claim that's $25,000 or greater in a civil nature. The circuit court also has a general, what they call general equitable powers. So where there has to be some issues decided that maybe don't impact money so much, but just impact equity, they're able to do that at the circuit court level. All criminal matters begin at the district court. So all misdemeanors, all felonies will begin at the district court. The misdemeanors will stay at the district court for the life of its case. The felonies will begin at district court. There'll be a couple of pre-hearings that are done to get people, exchange of information, going back and forth. And then there's a hearing called a preliminary examination if the defendant wishes to exercise that or if the people wish to exercise that. And that's an evidentiary hearing at the district court where proofs are taken, witnesses are called, evidence is produced, and the district court judge has to make a determination if there's probable cause to exist that the crime was committed and probable cause to exist that the defendant committed that crime. If that is found, then the district court judge will bind that case over to the circuit court and assign it to the circuit court for its trial or whatever resolution is reached at that level. So that's kind of the distinctions between the two courts. And those are the two trial courts in our, in our judicial system. So if somebody wants to appeal a matter that I decide, they can take appeal to the circuit court. If somebody wants to appeal what the circuit court has done, they can take that up to what's called the Court of Appeals in Michigan. And if you're not satisfied with what the Court of Appeals does in Michigan, then you can take that up to the Supreme Court in Michigan to have a final resolve. So that's kind of the structure in general about our judiciary.
Well, thank you for that. I, I thought your report was fantastic. I've always been amazed about the, the breadth of work that the district court gets involved in. And when you say it's a people's court, it truly is. At the, at the most basic level, it's the people's court. And you and your staff and all the people I've always thought were, were, you know, kind of behind the eight ball in many ways, but you do an amazing job and, and as do the other district courts. So thank you so much, Judge, for being here and thank you for your staff.
Thank you for your time and thank you for the support of the courts.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the public comment period. Do we have anyone here that would like to make public comment? Anyone online, Regina?
We have one individual online, Mr. Chair. And Mr. McCarter, if you would just unmute yourself, state your name and jurisdiction, you have three minutes.
Joseph Purnell McCarter, Georgetown Township, volunteer leader of the Save the Campbell effort. We would request the Ottawa County Board place on its agenda in an upcoming meeting the new round of Save the Campbell resolutions that have been submitted to you by email. The Georgetown and Jamestown Township boards have passed the new round of resolutions and we are getting positive indications other township boards will join. We appreciate that the county board responded positively to the first round of Campbell resolutions, which ultimately led the Trump administration to delay the closure of the Campbell. More and more Ottawa County citizens are coming to realize just how bad the net zero agenda is for us, not only in terms of grid reliability and cost, but also in terms of the dangers with the growing number of massive lithium ion battery storage plants. The reality is that these battery plants are far more environmentally dangerous than the Campbell, but since they only store energy for four hours, they do not solve the solar wind weakness of variable energy generation. Two such battery plants are already planned for Ottawa County and more are likely on the way. There has been an outpouring of concern in the county about these dangerous lithium ion battery storage plants. We need to cut off the money train that funds the net zero agenda's dangerous battery plant and solar panel field developments in Ottawa County, as well as seeks premature demolition of the Campbell. The money train begins with outrageously expensive and rising electric utility bills that Consumers Energy charges their customers in Ottawa County in order to fund their aggressively pursued net zero agenda. The Whitmer-appointed MPSC rewards Consumers Energy executives and investors handsomely to aggressively pursue the net zero agenda. Flushed with that money from electric ratepayers, Consumers Energy enters into contracts with globalist corporations to build massive dangerous battery storage plants and solar panel field developments in Ottawa County and across Michigan that bypass local control via Michigan's PA 233 law. We need to cut off this money train by exploring the possible replacement of Consumers Energy in Ottawa County with our own locally controlled electric cooperative, seeking the assistance of the Trump administration and an AI data center that could use part of Campbell's electric so that residential rates can be lowered for county ratepayers. Local electric cooperatives like Zelens have shown a locally controlled electric cooperative can be successfully run at a fraction of the price of Consumers Energy residential rates. So I would ask this board to place on its agenda this second round of Campbell resolutions emailed to you to thwart the misguided net zero agenda and defend the interests of county citizens. Thanks for your consideration of this request.
Thank you, Mr. McCarter. Anyone else? Anybody online? Okay, then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
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 It's been passed. I need a motion to approve the consent resolution.
So moved.
And I, I would like to, I would like to request item 7B.
7D?
7, 7B, the post-execution of contracts to be pulled from the consent resolution to allow for individual consideration of a contract.
Why don't we do this? Let's move that item to A. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? You repeat that Sylvia, I missed it, what was it again?
Yeah, so I, I would like to pull item 7B, the post-execution of contracts from, from consent, so we can.
We'll move it to A.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, otherwise, all in favor of the consent, somebody else?
Just gotta go to the clear roll call.
Oh, we got a roll call on this?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Rhodey.
Yes.
Mr. Bruger.
Yes.
Dr. Zalstra.
Yes.
Dr. Bonema.
Yes.
Mrs. Wenzel.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Dr. Dorisma.
Yes.
Mr. Kires.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
And Mr. Teeples.
Yes.
Okay, now we're back to item, on the action item 8A, which is in fact the previous matter that Sylvia was just bringing up, the ratification of contracts. Need a motion to ratify the contracts?
So moved.
Okay, Sylvia, want to address what your issue is?
Yeah, so, so I would like to move to, to divide this so that we can individually consider contract 2702 between Public Health and Flourish and Thrive Labs. So if we could vote on the rest separately from that one item. I don't know if you want, I don't know if you want to do that first, vote on the rest and then I can talk about that one.
Why don't you, why don't we do this? Why don't you explain what your issue is with 7201 contract?
Okay, it's 7202.
2, okay.
Okay, so, okay, so it says its purpose is a public health surveillance team exists to ensure that a team of multidisciplinary experts is ready to rapidly evaluate and respond to any public health complaint or threat to Ottawa County. This contract will provide a comprehensive evaluation of the processes and protocols of the team to include strengths, weaknesses, and suggestions for improvement. So I don't, I don't really so much have, have a concern about, you know, the purpose of this contract, but I have a concern about the provider of the contract. And so, and so Flourish and Thrive, Thrive Labs has been publicly working with state and local public health department employees to subvert President Trump's executive orders and the RFK HHS administration. And I don't think we should be supporting and working with organizations who are directly working against the Trump administration. I have no problem if someone doesn't like the president and if, even if they publicly, you know, are saying they don't like the president, but when they're actually taking action to subvert the HHS administration and to encourage others to do so, I have, that's, that's where I have an issue. And so, so that, the head of, the head of this organization on LinkedIn has, has posted that, you know, he has disagreement with the president's executive orders in regards to data sets. And so he put out an alert about six months ago that his company was going to be basically, you know, downloading and housing all of this, a bunch of data and different information that the Trump administration was asking the CDC to remove. And so, so he was, you know, letting basically public health people know nationwide, you know, hey, come to us instead. Trump has asked that this stuff be removed, but you can still get it from me. And, you know, some of, it wasn't just data, but it was also like, you know, policy information and stuff like that. So my, my concern is, you know, I think we do need to be careful about who we're partnering with. And when someone has a public disagreement with our Republican president and his administration and is actively working against him, I'm not sure that that's an organization we should be partnering with. I'm not sure, it becomes difficult for me to trust that, you know, their recommendations completely. So I guess one other, other thing beyond that is if you go to their website, Ottawa County is highlighted on their website. And so we oftentimes are a leader or a first one in on doing a new initiative and then oftentimes then our county is highlighted as doing new things. And that has happened with, with their website. So we're already connected with them publicly and I just don't think that we should continue with that. So for that reason, I will be voting no, and I would encourage others to do the same.
Just so we're clear, we're talking about contract 2702, right? If I get the numbers right, I'm not missing them up.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was. Okay, so any other, this is a $30,000 contract. It's with the Department of Public Health, right? Okay, so we're on the same page, Jordan or Jacob?
Yeah. I first want to say thank you to Sylvia for bringing this to our attention. I received your email a little bit after five last night, looked into it a little bit, didn't have a lot of time to, to dig, but I agree with your sentiment that we need to be careful in who we partner with. I, I think that's very important. As we look at this situation, I kind of took a step back because one of my big themes in my service is to try to lower the political activism, the, the different things that divide us. And I think that includes choosing partners that are doing the same. And if we can have these services provided through a partner that's not being an activist in a way that is divisive, that would be preferable. So I'm very open to, I don't know if we pull this contract, table it, discuss it, find a way to maybe use somebody that's less politically divisive. And I don't want to see it the other way too, either left or right, you know, I want to, I want to shoot it down the middle. I would support that. So I thank you for bringing this to my attention today.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
I'm just wondering if there's someone from public health here to speak to the contract.
And I did, I, I was going to mention that too. I did reach out to our health officer last night and have not received a response yet. So I, I think I would love to hear public health weigh in on this.
And my apology, my apologies, I didn't catch this until, you know, late yesterday, so.
Couldn't we just send this one back to public health and ask the finance chair or someone to talk to him and come up with a different solution?
Oh, Adeline's here, right on cue. Yeah. Have you been able to hear our discussion up until this point or you just?
Yeah.
So the concern. So the concern is with the provider for the, under this contract. The issue is, that's been raised, is whether or not this is a suitable provider that is trustworthy to give nonpartisan advice to the department. I mean, I think that's the essence of it.
Yeah, so Flourish and Thrive is, we have worked with them. They've been through the county R F P process for other work and were the highest scored vendor with the procurement, procurement team. The thing to note, I think I heard Commissioner Bonama, is that these funds are this fiscal year. So the work was going to be scheduled to occur in September, so delaying that, then the, the funds that are available currently will not be available. But the vent, sorry, the vendor has been through an R F P process, submitted for a different process, was the highest rated vendor through our, the procurement team that we went through with fiscal, so.
Joe?
I'd fully support having the team, the fiscal team, or someone look at the second highest vendor and see if that would be a good fit.
I'm inclined not to pull this. I think that Department of Public Health has their own team, they've vetted it. I think that it's not, it's, 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 it's a micro management issue that I think the board doesn't need to get involved in. They have a full department over there, lots of resources, lots of people. And if that's the highest rated vendor on the R F P process, and they've used them before, I think they trust the work. I'm satisfied with that. I don't, I don't see a need to pull it personally.
I have another comment on this. If this does pass today, and I hope that it does not, if this does pass today, I think perhaps we need to look at a policy of some sort of when our county is used as an example to advertise for another organization. Like I said, we're now on their website, you know, as a partner or as a client. And so I think that that should go through some sort of an approval process because our presence on their website is an indication that we support their work and what they're doing. And they've taken these steps to subvert H H S and the president. And I think that public alignment is, you know, something that we as a county should be taking a look at before it happens. So if this, if this does pass, I think we need to address that. And I think we also should perhaps address the fact that our county is on their website at this point in time.
I, I tend to agree on that part. I'm a little bit more with John and micromanage, trust the staff. We've hired staff, they've gone through a process, selected that what they feel is the highest qualified candidate. But if they're leveraging the use of Ottawa County, I'm gonna say it for political gain, I'm not game for that. So I would agree with you, Sylvia.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't just say it's a political gain. I mean, if any vendor is using Ottawa County without our permission, that's something we should be looking at. I mean, that's just, that's just what you do.
Well, well, there's a video of an Ottawa County employee that's used. So we did participate in that process, but I think that perhaps needs some review.
Yeah, if it's knowingly, that's one thing, but if it's not knowingly, so we should be looking at this. I, I agree with that. Allison?
Just want to say thank you to Commissioner Rhodey for bringing this to our attention. I do support the work that the public health department is requesting. I do agree with a couple of other commissioners that I would like to see them take a relook at who else was in the R F P process and bring before the board another option. Because sometimes these conversations don't get an opportunity to flesh out until it gets to this point. And we are the stopgap. That is one of our responsibilities as a board. That doesn't mean every single thing. Obviously, if you look at all these ratification of contracts, there's one that was pulled out today. Most of the time, we're like, yes, absolutely, we support all of this, a hundred percent. But every once in a while, there is one that will stumble through, and it is our job to just catch that and have a, a professional conversation about. And I think that's what we're here to do today. I will be voting to, to send this back.
So anybody else? So there's a, Joe?
Yeah, I was unsure if there was a motion or not, or I, or I could make, make one, but.
So are we?
So why don't you make your motion?
Okay, so, so I think I did make a, a motion, actually, but I don't think it was seconded to, to divide, to divide this motion so that we would vote on this item separately.
I had supported that.
Right. Okay, Jim?
I'm not saying they are not advocates in some way or another, but just taking a look at their website right now, it looks pretty plain vanilla. Public Health Department is, everyone is unique, sole servitor community, and it's all training in action. It looks pretty plain vanilla to me, so I.
The homepage?
Saw something that made you uncomfortable.
Yeah.
Not seeing it on, on the website, and it looks like it's, this is not a new vendor for the county.
Right, so, so I can tell you where it is. It's on LinkedIn with their C E O. And there were eight hundred and sixteen reposts of this particular original post about this and, and two thousand five hundred and fifty-five engagements with that post from public health personnel. So, so it was, it was very public in a professional, in a professional setting. It's not, it's not on, it's not on their website.
So just let me understand your issue here. You're saying, and thanks for clarifying that, you're saying the C E O of Flourish and Thrive on his personal social media is advocating for a position, and because he's advocating for a position, then you want to deny the contract? I just want to make sure I understand.
So I'll clarify that. The C E.
I'm just trying to understand, Joe. That's why I asked the question.
That's fine. I appreciate it. The C E O of this corporation, listing this corporation as his entity, it says, visit my website on here, on here, then goes in and does this, and in the course of the conversation is saying, my company is doing this. People were asking, can we give you money? And he was saying, no, I don't want my company to benefit from this act that we're doing to protect public health. So he was very much involving his company, because I looked at that, is this a personal thing? Or is this a company thing? And it was very clear it was a company thing. Not advertised on his website, but it was a company thing that he and his employers, employees were, were doing.
So this morning I asked you to provide us reasons, rationale, why you're against the contract. I, I would love to see the social media post, because it seems like more of a First Amendment issue than, you know, this company leveraging their connection for political purposes, right?
He's, he's completely with his, within his First Amendment.
I don't have a social media post, and I did ask for that.
To put this out. It's, I would, I would say that LinkedIn is slightly different than, say, Facebook.
Okay, again, I did ask for your rationale. I would appreciate the attachment or some sort of, you know, backup to, because what you're, what I, what I understand, you may disagree, that I think what you're saying is the C E O doesn't have First Amendment rights. Or to have a contract with us.
That's not what I'm saying at all. Because, because in fact, because in fact, a few minutes ago, I said, it's completely fine with me if he doesn't like our president. Completely fine with me if he doesn't like R F K. It's completely fine with me if he complains about either one of them and doesn't like what they're doing. But when he chooses to take an action to subvert executive orders and what they're doing, when he, when he literally takes action against what they're doing and is encouraging others to join him and for him to support them to do that, that's an entirely different thing.
Number one, I would appreciate the post. And number two, executive orders are not laws, so he's not subverting the law.
Okay, well.
You may be disagreeing with the interpret.
Okay with that, that's.
You may be disagreeing with an executive order. There are a lot of executive orders over the last six months that, you know, I would disagree with, and they've not been substantiated as legal. They're still through the process, so.
I.
The fact that, you know, the administration issues an executive order does not mean that, you know, that is law, and I think everyone has a right to, you know, advocate for their position.
I am fully aware that Democrats are actively working to not comply with executive orders.
They are not laws, they are executive orders.
Now we understand your rationale for that.
All right, Josh?
If they have not done anything illegal, and they are the ones who are, according to staff and others, are the best qualified to provide the service from a free market capitalist perspective, I'm gonna vote to give them the contract. And those who came in second or third, Joe, appreciate it, but they gotta do a better job if they want our business. Just one perspective.
Joe?
Could we just reconsider your motion, Commissioner Rhodey, to just send this back to finance? Would you be open to that?
I am open to that.
But there are, either way, it's, it's gonna be separating it. The motion on the table is to motion to divide or separate contract two seven zero two from the ratification list. That's the motion. So however it gets back, it's still gonna be a separation, right?
Yeah.
So. Let's vote on it. On the motion to divide or separate contract two seven zero two from the post-execution ratification of contracts, maybe we do a roll call?
Mr. Bonama? This is to separate it?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Joritzma?
No.
Mr. Bruger?
No.
Mrs. Medema?
Yes.
Mrs. Wenzel?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Uh, no.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Zaustra?
No.
Mr. Kires?
No.
And Mr. Teeples?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay, so now it's back to the original motion for the approval of the post-ratification of contracts. Have a motion for that.
So move, support.
Do we need another roll call on this one?
Yes.
Probably do, yeah.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kires?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Mrs. Medema?
No.
Mrs. Wenzel?
No.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Zaustra?
Yes.
Mr. Bruger?
Yes.
Mr. Bonama?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
No.
Mr. Joritzma?
Yes.
Mr. Teeples?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the two thousand twenty-six Capital Improvement Plan, a motion to approve the plan.
So moved.
Court.
It carries like, oh, me already? Come on up.
Morning. So the capital improvement plan that we discussed at the budget meetings is before you. This is the two thousand twenty-six through two thousand thirty plan that will be, the two thousand twenty-six will be part of the budget resolution if it proceeds forward. And we talked about the projects during the meeting. There have been no changes through the conversations that have occurred thus far. Were there any questions or open items?
Seen it all. Okay, let's take a vote.
Better roll call that one.
Yeah, better do a roll call on this one.
Mr. Bruger?
Yes.
Mr. Zaustra?
Yes.
Mr. Kires?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Joritzma?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mrs. Medema?
Yes.
Mr. Bonama?
Yes.
Mrs. Wenzel? And Mr. Teeples?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is Commissioner comments. Providing up to about three minutes for every commissioner to set forth their qualifications and characteristics he or she would like to see in our next administrator. Joe, you want to lead us?
Absolutely. Thank you. Mine are fairly short. So I'm looking for a leader who pursues excellence, a person of character, a Christ-like character, and a strong moral compass. A leader with a worldview that embraces truth and rejects confusion. A leader with a conviction to do what's right, even when no one is looking. A leader who has demonstrated their ability to make difficult decisions in trying times. A leader who is detail-oriented, for example, who will look closely at grants, contracts, and vendors and work with the board to improve vetting of how taxpayer dollars are spent. Ottawa County needs an administrator with executive leadership skills. A leader who cares about Ottawa's farmland and rural areas, is not overly focused on just the cities. I will not vote for someone who supports D E I, who wants to do equity audits, has done intensive work on D E I and critical race theory, or boasts about their work with national democratic leaders and D E I organizations. Ottawa County needs a leader who sees this as their home, and as another commissioner mentioned to me, either their home or their destination. Not just another job stop along the way. My goal is to find someone who understands Ottawa's rich Christian heritage and the legacy left by our forefathers, whose family supports their service to Ottawa County and who loves freedom as much as the people of Ottawa County love freedom.
George?
Yeah, I would echo almost all of that, actually. I think we need someone who is qualified, who knows what they're doing, and who either is familiar with Ottawa County or familiar with county government. Just looking off the list, I think, I think our person is in here. I'm, I'm feeling very confident about this pro, process. But yeah, someone with leadership skills, someone who's gonna spend time to get to know and get to work with all of the commissioners, but also the staff, too, having trust is super important. So someone who everyone in the community can trust, to be honest with them, even, you know, when there are disagreements, even when there's issues with staff. Really, a leader, I think, is, is what we need to find. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to this process. To everyone who applied, thank you. Having this breadth of experience, this many collective years of, of experience in service is pretty incredible. And even throwing your hat in the ring, I think, is really impressive thing to do. So thank you to everyone who applied, and I'm looking forward to it. Thanks.
Allison?
To this point, I agree with everything that's been said so far, so I will just add a couple more things. Things of note that elevated these candidates to a vote for me is I reviewed candidates. I noticed that those who understand and appreciate the uniqueness of our region and Ottawa County's values that were definitely highlighted by Commissioner Moss began to the rise to the top of my list. I'm looking for a candidate to additionally have excellent leadership skills, including various tasks and responsibilities that would lend themselves well to working in the role as their next county administrator. This person should have a high level of ethics, including absolute honesty, respect, courage, integrity, duty, a can-do-it attitude, someone who's an active listener, someone who has a servant's heart, a hard work ethic, respects and reflects their county's values, ability to care for oneself, as well as the ability to bring out the best in others, and can work with a variety of people and work towards goals together. I also looked for good communication skills. In this case, I took into account the written answers to questions in the applications. Those who had done a thorough, concise job thus far elevated them to the top. A candidate that understands county government, the roles involved in the community it seeks to serve by providing justice to its citizens, and this also recognizes the importance of county employees. A candidate should respect that the money belongs to the taxpayers for the benefit of the whole community, budgeting precisely and spend judiciously. Enjoy is the challenge of new opportunities to learn and grow while fostering that same energy in those around them, and that would be someone I would hope that would seek to inspire others. And then I also chose candidates that not only provided thorough answers to questions given them, but it left me wanting to get to know them more, and I pictured each of them individually sitting at the table with us today.
Well said. Thank you. All things I don't have to repeat. So I appreciate all of that. No, for me, it's very simple, three things. I'm looking for somebody who is absolutely competent in this space, who is worthy of the respect of the entire building, because that's, they're a leader of over twelve hundred employees, and also knows how to get things done. Those are the three things that I'm looking for. I feel that we already have that right now with our current team in place. I think, you know, our administrator and, and deputy administrator have shown us over the last eight months. I think, you know, our administrator and deputy administrator have shown us over the last eight months that that can be achieved here in Ottawa County, so I thank you for being a good example. And I know that you're dedicated to make sure the next team that comes in is successful as well. So simply, those are the three things I'm looking for.
All good things commented on so far as well. I put down competent, qualified, experienced, ex with integrity in all situations. I added apolitical. I remember back in the 90s, there was a shirt or a campaign from Nike that said, "Be like Mike." I think in this case, it's be like Gary. And be like Ron.
There you go. There we go.
All I've got.
Yep. Well, I'll be wearing shirts next week, Gary.
Kind of what everybody else said, but also I added a few here as like, I wanna see an administrator that follows the board's strategic plan. I thought that was very important. We had a board before that filed a strategic plan really good. Works with elected officials, other five elected officials and department heads as well. I'd like to see an administrator that's involved in the community and nonprofits. I think that he is the face of the county, and I like to see him out and about in the county. I'd like to see administrator that has a degree in administration. I think that is a plus for him. I'm looking for one that has 10 years or more and experience in financing budgets. So, yeah, that's part of my things I look for.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. You know, I think everyone's just plenty of the same things, really. You know, looking for someone with strong executive skills and someone with experience with Ottawa County, right? And appreciates diversity of this county and appreciates diversity of this board, right? So I think we have, you know, a lot of representation of a lot of sectors here, and, you know, I think our new administrator should represent that well, so.
Yep. We're hearing a lot of common themes here, but I would just throw in there, earlier this year, I read a really interesting book called An Ordinary Man by Richard Norton Smith, and it's biography on Gerald Ford. And not that Gerald Ford was necessarily the greatest president in the history of the country, but he was a person of character and a person that was able to work across the aisle and was a person of trust. I think those are our leadership attributes I'd like to see in our next county administrator. Leadership skills also includes communication skills and ability to communicate. We want an administrator that will implement the policy of the board, that the board actually sets the policy going forward. I would like to see a candidate with a connection to West Michigan, whether that's they lived here, worked here, family here, some kind of connection, because I think we have a unique community in Ottawa County, and somebody that can relate to that on a personal level would be helpful. I'm looking for a candidate that's got the educational preparation to be able to take this job. I'm really pleased, a lot of these candidates have masters of public administration, MBAs, JDs. We've got some people that certainly on paper have the qualifications for the position. And we want relevant professional experience in municipal or county governments. Somebody that's actually done the job, understands the complexity of county government, and can work, build a team together, implement the policies that the board has set forth, be fiscally responsible, and be a part of our community. It's a short list, isn't it?
It just gets bigger.
Can need five people for that one, Jim.
What's that?
Can need five people for that one.
I rest my case.
Kendra?
Most everyone has said what I have qualified first, but I think next for me of importance is honesty, integrity, and trustworthiness. Excellent leadership skills, ability to inspire and motivate others, commitment to nurturing growth within the team as it relates to Ottawa County. Excellent communication skills, familiarity with the dynamics of our county, and then courage and accountability.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Well, I wanted to start by remembering what we're hiring an administrator for. So Ottawa County is a beautiful county with a bright future. The people of Ottawa County have a deep love for America, individual freedoms, and traditional American values, the bedrock of our vibrant communities. Strongly influenced by Dutch settlers, our county's rich history is rooted in hard work, faith, and family, making Ottawa County one of Michigan's most conservative counties. Ottawa County offers a high quality of life with breathtaking freshwater coastline, our scenic beauty, and strong social fabric attracts not only tourists but also permanent residents. Ottawa County is Michigan's seventh most populous county, the fastest growing of the state's 10 largest counties, with an estimated population of 305,000 people in 2024. The county's spectacular parks, economic opportunities, bountiful agriculture, excellent schools, safe neighborhoods, and low property taxes all make Ottawa an attractive place to live. The county consistently ranks within the top five to 10 wealthiest counties in Michigan. With its rich farming heritage and agricultural industry, Ottawa County ranks third in the state in agricultural sales, producing an incredibly diverse range of agriculture products. Agriculture and food processing, durable goods manufacturing, and institutes of high education make up the three largest sectors of Ottawa County's economy. Ottawa County has an annual operating budget of $300 million and employs approximately 1,200 employees. The county is known for its strong fiscal stewardship, has a consistently healthy financial status with the highest credit ratings from Fitch Ratings and Moody's Investment Service, while having the sixth lowest general property tax rate in the state. We have an amazing county to steward. This board is elected to preserve the freedoms and the constitutional rights of the people while ensuring the county's statutory responsibilities are met. Per our mission statement, Ottawa County is committed to excellence and the delivery of cost-effective public services. We are hiring a county administrator to provide oversight of the day-to-day operations of the county and ensure that department leaders will carry out their tasks effectively, efficiently, and with fiscal responsibility. I'm looking to hire an administrator who desires to protect and advance the family-oriented, time-honored culture and values that make Ottawa County attractive while providing cost-effective core governmental services with excellence. As such, I'm basing my decisions today on qualities such as connection to and history within Ottawa County, executive-level experience, background in county government or comparable experience, emotional intelligence, and effective proven leadership.
Thank you. First, I'd like to echo what Jordan said, and I think everybody feels the same way, to all the candidates that submitted applications. The list is very broad, very long, and it changed somewhat over this last go-round. So if you look at all the people that have applied to be this county administrator, it's incredible, and it's, yeah, because it is a unique opportunity. And so a lot of people are gonna be disappointed today, but as a commission, we'd like to thank you all, everyone. Given the breadth of the credentials of the various candidates, this is what I'm looking for in the candidate. Senior executive-level management, leadership skills for, with regard to complex organizations like Ottawa County. I'm looking for someone who has comparable experience in county government, especially with regard to the number of employees and the size of the budget that person's responsible for. I've been looking for someone with an advanced educational degree, especially in public administration, someone that's non-political, ethical, full of integrity and trustworthy. I'm looking for someone with local ties if possible, but certainly an awareness of the local issues. I'm looking for an effective and collaborative communicator, strategic planner, and thinker, and decision-maker, even with regard to confidential matters or controversial matters. That's kind of my nutshell. So with that, next thing on the agenda is to go into closed session. So we have a motion to go into closed session.
Work.
All right. We need a roll call on this one, Justin.
Yes, sir. Mr. Zalstra.
Uh, no.
Mr. Bruegger.
Yes.
Mr. Joritzma.
Yes.
Mr. Kires.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mrs. Midima.
No.
Mr. Bonama.
Yes.
Mrs. Roddy.
No.
Mr. Moss.
No.
Mrs. Wenzel.
No.
And Mr. Teeples.
Yes.
And the motion fails.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the candidate selection by ballot. A motion to approve each commissioner identifying up to eight administrator candidates by ballot, utilizing assigned numbers without comments about any candidates. And for the tabulation and selection by majority vote, up to five candidates, plus possibly two alternates to be interviewed for the county administrator position. Have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, I don't think, maybe we better take a roll call on this one.
Could I ask a question on this real quick?
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
For the candidate that's already done an interview, how are we handling that?
He is still, he's still in the mix. He hasn't withdrawn, so he's already been interviewed. He's just one, so, yeah, that's a great point of clarification here. So when we're looking at up to five, my thinking is that's five in addition to Mr. Tremblay, who's already out there, right? Joe?
I'd like to see the board members vote today, and if that candidate rises to the top as everyone has done their due diligence with the full list, I'd like that candidate that we already interviewed to actually be just included in the vote.
Well, this is, the motion is for the interviews, right? He's already been interviewed. So he's just, he'd be at the next process of selection. So this is just to interview, we've already interviewed him, so that's, he's done. But when we get to the selection process, that's where he would come into play.
Yeah.
I disagree. I think he, any candidates who are moving forward in this new administrator search process should be voted for today. That's just my personal view.
If we, if we just, if we move him into this mix, then we will effectively be deciding whether to select him, which is not the issue. The issue is we're picking people to interview only. That's what this motion's about, right?
Yeah, if we, if we were to add him into the mix, and let's say six or seven of us didn't vote for him the second time, what then?
And he wouldn't be interviewed in this new round of an administrator search. It's a fresh search, right, to some degree? And now that there's all these other candidates who have applied, you know, my calculus on the overall group is different than it was, you know, a month or two ago. So I'm taking a fresh look at the full group, the full picture, looking at who I want to interview, considering everyone on the table. So I have a specific list of people I think should move forward, and I think that's the best way to do it.
George?
I think it's fine. I mean, if they wanna, whoever wants to vote for him, that's fine.
So, but what happens if, just as, what happens if he doesn't get enough votes today if we included him?
I suppose theoretically, when we're done with the interviews, we could still choose to hire him. We just won't interview him again.
Well, I think if he was really serious and the board wants to see him continue in this search process, he should be interviewed again with the other people.
If he gets enough votes, then I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think people would want to hear from him again if he was voted for.
So just so I'm clear, understanding, so if he does not get enough votes today to be interviewed, what happens?
That he is not interviewed and not considered in this search process.
He would stand with the other ones that we don't select.
I think theoretically, we could still select him. Why not?
How do you do that?
As a county administrator, when we do the final vote, we could still vote for him. We could select anyone, even if we don't interview them. This is specifically a vote to choose who we're going to interview. This is not binding us for anything else. It's just choosing who we want to interview.
So under your thinking, Jordan, if, even though we pick, let's say we pick five folks, five candidates today, right, to interview, when we eventually get to the vote for decision-making, everybody's back on the table?
Theoretically, yeah.
Technically, all 58, 59 are there.
Yeah.
I see it as an elimination process.
But that's not what Jordan's saying.
Right, I'm disagreeing with Jordan.
That's, we need to get this clarified. We need to understand this. That's another great clarification point.
Right, yeah, I'd like crystal clarity on this one. That's why I think the easiest thing to do is just have this be the vote for our interview process, so it's extremely clear to all candidates, no matter who they are, that the, whoever the board decides on in this meeting, these are the candidates that we're going to continue on through the process.
Right, everybody else is eliminated after today.
Right. Unless there's other board action.
Right. That's, that was my thinking as I'm working through this too, Jim.
In that format, would candidate Tremblay get a second interview?
If he receives the requisite number of votes?
The same as everybody.
So what Joe is suggesting is that Michael Tremblay be added and included into this list of 58.
He's on the list.
But she is.
On the list.
Is he in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Included in the five, Joe, right?
Right. Right.
And if he, he, like anyone else, doesn't get the requisite votes to be interviewed, then he, like everyone else that didn't get the requisite votes, are essentially done.
Right.
Essentially.
Yep.
Without further action.
Without further action. Jordan, you okay with that? I think everybody's nodding here, that's what we want. Yeah. Okay, so let's, let's just have a verbal on Joe's motion that Michael Tremblay is gonna be included in the selection today to be interviewed, or not?
I don't know if we need him.
So is this a friendly amendment to just clarify the motion as it exists and include that text?
Yes, please, yeah.
Makes sense. So Mr. Bruegger is okay with that, because he seconded it. Or sorry, Mr. Kire seconded it, but.
It's never on there, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now, Ron, you want, Ron Franz, you wanna kind of lead us as to how you guys have been working on a process for us, you and Justin and team? So could you kind of help us through this?
Sure. In a few moments, Justin is going to share a sheet that contains what we're calling rules of procedure. This process of using ballots might not be familiar to many of you, maybe none of you, I don't know, in this context. In any event, as the administrator and I and Justin and others began to think about it, a lot of questions arose. And we made an effort to try to resolve those questions through these rules. So what I'm asking is that you please listen carefully to Justin explain those rules. I think you're gonna find that this is a very fair process and that the rules are very comprehensive. Gary and I believe that this gets us to where we want to be in a good way, and we hope that you agree.
All right, Justin, I guess I'll just pass the buck to you.
Essentially, our plan is to pass around a very simple ballot that has each commissioner's name on it in eight lines. And in the first round of the process, each commissioner can select up to eight numbers, obviously representing the candidates. We don't, we don't have the information that you have, so all I'm looking at are numbers. So we want those numbers to be displayed on the ballot, up to eight. And essentially, when those are turned in, we will conduct a tally. And I'll, what I want to be able to do is basically read aloud as we go through a tally process, and I can, see if I can share my screen quickly and show you our little tally spreadsheet here. So this will be displayed on the screen as we're entering the numbers in. And I'm just gonna do an example here, so we're gonna do 15. And then maybe if, if another commissioner selects 15, you can see over here the vote totals increase. The goal, obviously, is to get to six. So six votes, a majority of the commissioners selecting a particular number moves that individual onto the list of finalists. So in an ideal world, if we have five individuals in the first round that are selected as finalists, then those would be the candidates, the people receiving six votes. Otherwise, we would go to subsequent rounds, and in those subsequent rounds, for example, in round two, any candidate receiving zero votes would be eliminated from the process. So now we're only dealing with the universe of candidates who have had votes. And then we take that through round by round. And then we, we take that through round by round. So obviously, in an example, maybe we got three finalists in round one. That would look like, in round two, each commissioner would be able to choose five numbers, if that makes sense. And then I would essentially, quickly, as we're here, as we're tallying and entering these numbers in, I'll just read the numbers so that the commissioners can verify the accuracy, and we're publicly displaying the, the totals. Anything else?
Can I ask you a question about that part? You said that you're going to read each person's ballot. So are you going to say, for example, Commissioner Midima selected the following number, so I can double check right by my spot?
Correct.
And so that others can hear it?
Essentially, yes. So essentially, to make sure, so you're kind of checking my work, but also that, and Jess is going to help me here in a minute to actually be typing those in, but, so you can see it and hear it? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're also looking at the screen to make sure your, your numbers are correct under your name.
Increase the size of this here, it's.
I was going to say, I'm, I'm.
It's up to each one of us to make sure that that screen is accurate.
There we go.
Point again, it's up to each one of us.
For some reason, I can't zoom in. But, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Ah, there you go. Oh! Didn't know they did that.
Are you kidding me? Never been able to see this. What with this?
This is great.
We also.
Holy smokes.
Wow! Take it a little bit to the left.
In the center. So, so again, it's up.
Yeah, we can zoom in as well.
Again, it's going to be up to each commissioner to make sure their numbers have been accurately identified.
Oh, here we go.
There you go. So we don't put the burden back on the clerk.
Oh, getting a little.
Hand us a piece of paper, we'll put a name on top and give you the, the numbers we want. Correct, Justin?
Correct, we have, we have the ballot papers.
Perfect.
These are not watermarked ballots. Just want to throw that out.
No, it doesn't go up, okay.
What's that, the one over there? Is that where you're at?
This one right here.
Doesn't like then.
Maybe I'll just go stand right in front of it.
YouTube, it's right there as well. Do you pull up the YouTube of the meeting?
That's what I'm doing. Yeah, because I can't, I can't. Yeah, so it's, it's like it's, that'll work.
Ready? Question for you, Justin, while you're tabulating, would you appreciate us taking up five-minute recess while you're doing that? Or are we staying in session, or what? Stay in session?
He's going to read them all out.
I'm going to do it as we go. Okay.
Just keep going.
No pressure, we're watching you like a hawk. I, it's, you know.
What you do. In the country, frankly, yeah.
That'd be great.
This is very. We're going to start our own business. Thank you.
Did you bring any portable little walls so we can?
I didn't mind. I think you gave me the wrong one.
Oh, they're named, got mine.
But he was in number two, so whatever. Oh, they're in district.
Other, basically.
Forgot, look at the name.
Ballot mix up there.
Would have been very happy with me.
Got Jim's ballot, I was going to quick vote real quick, you know?
Hi, Doug.
Yeah.
It's been great.
You're pretty quick.
For these Dominion ballots?
Yeah, I got to check with Justin.
And where we're going. It's not in order, right? Not in order of preference, right?
I didn't think, yeah, I didn't. He'd be very happy with me.
There's no, not doing any rank choice here.
This is just who gets invited to the interview.
Correct.
Just numbers only on the ballot?
Just.
Numbers.
The first page, right? The other ones are just.
Yeah, the first page.
Okay.
No, you're good.
I think once we have all.
Oh, I'm doing it too, though.
Let me cross check this one.
All right. I'm just starting in the order that the ballots are, are filed here. Commissioner Berry, and these are the following selections, number twenty, number twenty-three, number twenty-nine, number thirty-eight, number forty-four, number fifty, number fifty-one. Commissioner Bonama, sorry, Jess, number twenty, number forty-four, number fifty. That's it. Commissioner Joritzma, number thirteen, number twenty, number forty-four, number fifty. Commissioner Teeples, number forty-four, number twenty, number thirteen, number forty-three, number twenty-nine, number thirty-eight, number fifty-one, number fifty-three. Commissioner Zylstra, number thirteen, number twenty-four, number twenty-nine, number thirty-eight, number forty-three, number forty-four, number fifty, number fifty-four. Commissioner Kiers, number fourteen, number twenty, number forty-one, number forty-four, number fifty. Mr. Bruegger, number thirteen, number fourteen, number twenty, number forty-three, number forty-four, number fifty. Commissioner Midima, number, I'm sorry, oh, number thirteen, number eighteen, number twenty-nine, number thirty-nine, number forty-one, number fifty, number fifty-four. Commissioner Moss, number thirteen, number eighteen, number twenty-nine, number thirty-nine, number forty-one, number fifty, number fifty-four. Commissioner Roddy, number eighteen, number twenty-nine, number thirty-nine, number forty-one, number fifty, number fifty-four. Commissioner Wenzel, number eighteen, number twenty-nine, number thirty-nine, number forty-one, number fifty, number fifty-four. All right, so I don't know if we want to scroll over here, so we do have a number of finalists here. So candidate fifty, twenty-nine, forty-four, thirteen, and twenty. Those are our five finalists. Yeah. So candidate fifty, ten votes. Candidate twenty-nine, seven votes. Candidate four, seven votes. Candidate thirteen, six votes. Candidate twenty, six votes.
About that.
Wow.
How about that, guys?
Didn't even have a tie. Well, not a tie.
Don't even need round two.
Don't even need round two.
How about that?
Wow.
Okay, so we also talked about the possibility of having two alternative, alternates. If any of the, these five are contacted and would, like to withdraw, the idea is to have a replacement. So we should have, we should vote first for alternate number one, right? And then we'll vote again for alternate number two.
Okay, and from the list of, are there any further down there more than twenty-three? Or is that, was that the last one?
So.
Oh, there you go.
Now we got.
Candidate fifty-three, essentially. And then.
Okay.
From there, so we're going to have a universe of.
In a new sheet. Can you, can you run those off? Justin, tell us.
Yeah, let's, let's read these out here. So it's going to be candidates eighteen, thirty-nine, thirty-eight, forty-three, fourteen, fifty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, fifty-three.
Why not the top, the other top two with five votes?
Yeah, there was forty-one and fifty-four.
Still have to choose an order of preference.
Oh.
All those are automatically our alternates?
Oh, we got to revote.
They don't have six votes, they probably shouldn't be.
Everybody comes back in now, we have to take. So the first vote would take, would pick the numbers that he's just left, that are left, and we vote again.
Okay.
To select the first alternate. Well, I guess we could vote twice, if they both get sixes, they're in, right?
But we need, one has to be alternate, alternate number one.
Yeah, so, so we should probably vote second. It's to be safe.
In person?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
So historically, we've, we've used a method where you take, like, those two that received the most votes, and the board says a number. They either say number, like, whatever, whatever it was there, they either pick the first number or the second number.
I get, I'm fine with the whole group, I got.
Justin, can you please put that back up to screen?
Yeah, I'm doing that here.
Sorry.
Did you just delete your?
My impatience.
I just deleted the election, no. Trying to find a way to, it didn't, didn't work, but I'm going to, let me go ahead and read them again.
There you go, just like that.
Yeah, okay.
That's good.
So, so just we're clear on this. He's going to read the numbers that got votes in the first round.
Yeah.
One or more votes. And we're, from this list, we're going to vote again, with the idea of hopefully getting someone up to six.
Okay.
This be an alternate?
This will be alternate.
Alternate number one.
Alternate number one.
Yeah.
All right? No, just first, come back.
Okay.
So there's no confusion on that. This will be only for alternate number one.
Okay, well, that, that's.
Okay, Justin, you want to read those numbers to us again one more time?
Sure. It's forty-one, fifty-four, eighteen, thirty-nine, thirty-eight, forty-three, fourteen, fifty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, and fifty-three.
I, I need you to do that again for me.
You're good.
Because there were some numbers there that. I'm just, I know, I just want to hear him say it. No, just, can you read who, who, who's still in the running?
Yep. The candidates who are currently still in the running, so not the finalists, but below that, any, any candidate receiving votes. And that's candidate forty-one, candidate fifty-four, candidate eighteen, candidate thirty-nine, candidate thirty-eight, candidate forty-three, candidate fourteen, candidate fifty-one, candidate twenty-three, candidate twenty-four, and candidate fifty-three.
So we're voting for alternate one, and we're putting one number?
Number.
On our page?
Oh, okay. Oh, gotcha, so you have the ballot at the.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Make sure we got.
Each person just puts one number they want?
Okay.
For alternate number one.
So, so the initial plan is for one ballot and two names on that ballot.
Okay.
But judging by the numbers here, we may have a tie. So we can do it either way. You know, I think that the rules that we spent, for, to keep it going smoothly, we initially had one ballot.
But if we vote for two, then we have to rank them.
Right.
You have to do one and two. Your first choice and second choice.
Okay.
I don't agree with that.
Why don't we just vote for one?
I agree, let, let's.
Because I think what's going to happen is.
It, it, there'll be a spread, probably.
Let's vote, let's vote for one candidate.
So whoever gets the most votes.
Okay.
First, often, then we vote again.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, hang on a sec, hang on, hang on, hang on a sec. We're going to vote for one person.
Correct.
But that one person still has to get six votes to move on.
Okay.
Correct. We're all on the same page.
Yep.
Yes, yes, yes.
The old ghost.
Okay, that's alternate one.
Alternative.
Right, and so the, the theory then, alternate two will be the next ballot.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I get it. Flexibility's good.
That's right.
See what happens.
One, one. Never.
We had this one.
Regina? Here's mine.
This is tallying.
Dixie. You voted it?
No, I, apologies. Last minute change. Take all the difference. Thank you, thank you. All right, Commissioner Bruegger, fifty-three. Commissioner Midima, fifty-four. Commissioner Joritzma, forty-one. Commissioner Moss, fifty-four. Commissioner Zylstra, fifty-four. Commissioner Kiers, forty-one. Commissioner Bonama, forty-one. Commissioner Roddy, fifty-three. Fifty-four.
Yeah.
Sorry. Commissioner Berry, thirty-eight. Commissioner Teeples, fifty-one. Commissioner Wenzel, fifty-four. So we have candidate fifty-four receiving five votes. So obviously, as top vote getter, I'm assuming that is our alternate number one, correct?
Voting, he's got a vote six.
Voting at six.
Yeah.
Okay.
We got to revote.
And let's do another round.
Wear some people down.
Could I make a potential motion, Mr. Chair? I, I don't have to. Uh, yeah, yeah, just a, just a thought.
Is that in Robert's rule?
Did it just get darker?
This did.
It just got darker.
Careful what you say next.
Have to be really careful. So there are two that seem to have a, a lot more votes. Could we potentially vote from those two top vote getters, alternate one and an alternate two? They were, they, I think they were the ones on the first list that were the next highest, so they're, we could keep going round and round.
They actually are, fifty-four and forty-one.
But maybe we could just.
Yep.
Fifty-one got three votes in the second round, fifty-four got five. In the first round, fifty-four got five and forty-one got five.
Justin, did anybody get more, I can't see the screen. Anybody get more than three votes?
Yeah.
I mean, besides fifty-four and forty-one.
Fifty-four and forty-one, correct.
Everybody else has less than three.
Everyone else has one.
Everyone else has one.
Everybody else has one.
I think those are probably our guys, that's the second time.
So, I mean, I could make a motion that we vote.
Is this a?
I'm not gonna make a mo- motion, but I could make a motion, if you would like, that the board vote from fifty-four and forty-one. Just to speed this up.
I'd support that second.
So I, so I will make that motion.
Second.
For one, number one alternate.
To be the number one alternate, we vote from those two.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. Thinking on the potential motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that's fine.
Only for the number one alternate between two people, forty-one and fifty-four.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, let's do it.
Right, and you have, you have your ballots, right? Okay.
We got ballots.
Just vote.
Do you want an alternate one?
Yeah, it is, it is.
Gonna get there. Lost my screen. Tell you what, it's close. I'm amazed, but.
I have to, it really worked well.
Pretty much what I was thinking.
Well, I voted for two in order, so it's basically the same thing.
Pretty good. Yeah. Pick for your input.
This isn't set up to do that, so I will.
Only be one number on those ballots.
Yeah, there's not on a few, and this isn't set up to do that.
Would you take my alternate one to be?
The top, I wanna read the top line? Hey. I mean, I, I know what you mean.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Spoiled ballot.
Well, are, are you good if I cross?
Alternate two, just scratch it.
Okay.
Good.
All right, I'm gonna initial this.
Initial.
It's official now.
Can you stamp it too?
Initial that, we'll stamp it, we'll go downstairs. Good point.
Make mine a professional ballot only if it's.
All right.
A lot of work jokes in this meeting.
I know, unusual number of. Commissioner Joretzma, forty-one. Commissioner Zylstra, fifty-four. Commissioner Kires, forty-one. Commissioner Teeples, fifty-four. Commissioner Bruger, forty-one. Commissioner Bonama, forty-one. Commissioner Midima, fifty-four. Commissioner Barry, forty-one.
Gonna be close.
Commissioner Moss, fifty-four.
What was the?
So we have. So we have, um, six votes for fifty-four, five votes for forty-one.
So do we need a motion to make fifty-four our first alternate and forty-one our second?
We don't need a motion.
Or is it already done?
Automatically in.
Fifty-four is automatically in.
I would, I would love to have that motion, just so it's extremely clear.
Well.
I do too, because there's not six for forty-one.
Right.
Oh, no, I'm just talking about fifty-one is in.
Fifty.
Fifty-four.
Four is in, excuse me.
Yes.
So if, so I, I'll make the motion, eh, make it exceedingly clear that fifty-four is the first alternate and forty-one is the second alternate.
I'll support that.
Yep.
Yep.
Discussion?
All right.
So there's a motion on the table that fifty-four becomes our first alternate, and if we need a second alternate, it would be forty-one. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? There's the slate, we did it.
We did it.
Fantastic.
Justin, thank you very much.
Oh, yeah.
Those high stakes.
It's been this election I've administered in a while, so.
We have to return our ballots.
Stakes live.
Again, for the public.
Get those numbers to us.
It was a long process. But I wanna thank the candidates again. Really fantastic, and the commitment and the work that people put into their applications really showed through. And Ottawa County just can't thank you enough. Who will be willing to stick your neck out there and participate in this process for us, so.
Mr. Chair.
So thank you. Jim, uh, maybe for the benefit of those watching on YouTube, could we just, uh, review the list of the five primary finalists and then, yeah. To all, Justin, you wanna repeat where we end up on this?
Yep, and, and the, all I have are numbers, so I can give you that. So the, the five finalists are candidate number thirteen, candidate number twenty, candidate number twenty-nine, candidate number forty-four, and candidate number fifty. And then alternate number one is candidate fifty-four. Alternate number two is candidate forty-one.
Okay. Let's move on. I need a motion to amend the agenda or to table item eight F, no, excuse me, eight E.
Sumo.
Eight, it's eight, it's eight F now.
Sumo.
So it's. Somehow it's going off this agenda.
Just to, a vote to table or just to remove off the agenda?
Remove, to remove.
From.
It's gone.
I'll second it.
All right, uh, this is, uh, it's now item eight F, but it's coming off. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, next thing on the agenda is the committee reports, do we have anybody to report to the, any committees that need to report that haven't done it already? All right, next one on the agenda is public comment, anyone else like to make comment to the, on the public?
Sheila Detloff, Holland Township. So I'm wondering if any of you use low-flow showerheads or toilets in your homes? What about here at the county offices or in the county jail? Are there any water restricting type devices employed here? I don't know, I'm just asking questions. But if any of that's true, you are actively subverting President Trump's executive order titled "Maintaining Acceptable Water Pressure in Showerheads", issued on April ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Yes, that's the actual title. And if that's the case, the only option, going by Sylvia's rationale, is for you to resign as county commissioners. Sincerely, thank you to those of you who voted to pass the post-execution ratification of contracts. I very much appreciate the common sense prevailed on that.
Thank you, anyone else like to make public comment? None, uh?
We have one individual online. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners, Becky Patrick, Allendale. In the same vein, uh, the same agenda item that Sheila was just talking about, I would also like to thank you, um, for passing that. I do recognize Commissioners' right to pull things off of post-ratification, and I'm glad that you had that discussion, because I think it, um, is going to be something that you're gonna be seeing over and over again, um, based on past experience. And because of that, I would encourage you to, um, perhaps require yourselves to, number one, give more information and more time before you start talking about policy changes like that. And also to reflect on policy changes that you're seeing patterns of. So for example, we've seen this exact issue come up over and over and over again, about somebody taking issue with a potential vendor, and because of their, the vendor's own policy preferences. If that's going to be the way we're gonna do business here in Ottawa County, you need to get that out there for the world to see, and you need to do that by having a policy discussion, not on onesie-twosie things coming up at the last minute. So thank you for your vote today.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anybody online, Justin?
Uh, we have one individual, Dan, and, uh, Dan, if you could just unmute yourself, state your name and jurisdiction, you have three minutes.
Thanks, Justin. Dan Wunarski, Georgetown Township. Mr. Chair, my, my house did have low-flow uh, showerheads when I bought it, but I took them out, and I have high-flow, although I'm, I'm regretting that a little bit, because I'm a teenager now. And I have to limit his shower time, but, um, I, uh, I appreciate the vote that took place, thank you for keeping it an open session, and, uh, the, the spreadsheet, whoever made that spreadsheet, I really enjoyed that, and, and the formulas behind the scenes to update everything, so. Um, in all seriousness, I, I enjoyed the, um, the atmosphere of working together today, so thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else, Justin?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, now that we go back to Gary for Commissioner comment, or Administrator comments.
And I promise to be short. Once again, been a busy month, and I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, really compliment Regina on this whole process. She has been the keeper of the record, she's been our sounding board, she's been, uh, in our conference room, when we've been bouncing ideas off and on. Justin, uh, you know, has, has played a role, and his staff have, and, and again, um, you know, uh, just trying to put all those files together for everybody. And it was a nightmare in itself, trying to blend everything together, so again, uh, kudos to them. Couple other things, uh, this month, we, uh, hosted a Southwest landfill meeting, uh, with the road commission and various individuals, uh, that have been involved in, uh, Southwest, uh, landfill over the years, and several commissioners, uh, for the purpose of getting them to understand the history of Southwest, uh, landfill, because, uh, uh, whether we like it or not, it's gonna be part of our legacy for many, many years down the road. So, uh, the next thing, uh, that's gonna happen, probably in October or the latter part of September, uh, the road commission's gonna host, uh, a tour of Southwest landfill for the commissioners to get a even better understanding of, uh, what exists out there. So, again, um, you know, thanks for everybody that's been involved. Uh, the chair and I had a meeting, uh, with Hudsonville City and Georgetown, uh, over some, uh, easement differences, and, uh, you know, they're still in the process of working some of those out, and hopefully, uh, we can get to, uh, an arrangement with both. With a special, uh, budget meeting, uh, and I really wanna thank the board for, uh, a minimum amount of questions as it related to, uh, next year's budget. I think, again, it was because, uh, you know, the information that you've been supplied. And again, uh, um, you know, I understand, and believe in the purpose of, uh, the ratification stuff. And, uh, but procurement does a, a tremendous job in helping department heads as they move through some of those processes, and again, we can look at that and, uh, uh, maybe see what we can do different for next year. We had, uh, individual, uh, department heads and elected officials meeting, uh, um, throughout the month. Again, uh, uh, they keep me extremely updated on, on things going on in their organizations. This past month, at our department head and elected officials meeting, it was hosted over at nine-one-one. All our department heads, uh, really were interested to see what happens over there. It's a state-of-the-art facility, and a new director took us on a tour, and everybody got a, a good understanding where all the calls for service go into in the county, and how they're projected. Everything from, you know, uh, uh, a young boy losing their bike to a, uh, um, multiple-vehicle accident, that, uh, creates all hands on deck, so, uh, they do an excellent job. Attending the policy board meeting, uh, at nine-one-one, Mr. Rhodey's also on that board. I had, uh, a meeting with Jason, I know Karen had a, uh, a meeting with him from the VA. Uh, we have a little bit of a dilemma. He lost, uh, one of his state grants on the transportation, uh, of VA people to, uh, uh, for medical treatment. So we're talking through that, we're trying to, uh, come up with some solutions for him, and, uh, you know, I, I think we'll, uh, we'll probably figure something out that we can help sustain that. Now with Bob DeReese, uh, Ron and I did, uh, and again, uh, he was interested in, uh, getting some feedback, uh, what the, uh, commission, and what we felt about, uh, the work he was doing, and again, um, I've heard nothing but positive stuff, uh, about Bob and his organization. When you get your talking points from Shannon in regards to this month's, uh, uh, activities on the board, uh, they'll be attached to it, a broadband update. I know Commissioner Midima has, has heard about that. Paul Sachs came in and showed me, uh, a document that he had put together, because, uh, you know, everybody kinda wonders, you know, what's happening with broadband and, uh, you know, what the successes have been, so. Uh, Shannon's gonna work that into your talking point, so as you go around to your local units of government, you can share with that. Also, um, on October first, we're gonna host a, uh, local units meeting, uh, at the Fillmore facility. Be nine o'clock in the morning, and, uh, it'll be our chance, after quite some time, to, uh, uh, dialogue with the local units and, uh, the elected officials and, uh, uh, some of the department heads, uh, will be updating them on different things that's going on with, uh, uh, water issues and, uh, uh, the broadband and, and a variety of things that, uh, uh, will, uh, uh, present that morning.
Gary, on that, that's the same date as the MAC conference.
It might be gone.
Yeah.
Is it?
I'm sorry, but.
Maybe, maybe it'll be the next week.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Sorry, Phil, I don't keep your schedule.
Okay.
And, the event of the year, if you're not doing anything on the twenty-eighth, uh, from eleven-thirty to one, uh, you can come here and personally see, uh, Ron France flipping burgers, uh, for the staff here. And, uh, um, like always, I'll help them out and give them direction, and, uh, you know, but, uh, we're looking forward to that day. And, uh, again, just to recognize the staff, and, uh, you know, if you're so inclined and wanna make the donation, you can do that to Regina. And, uh, but, uh, come out if you'd like on the twenty-eighth. So, that's my report.
Gary, shouldn't you, uh, introduce our new facilities director to the public?
Oh, for the public?
Yes.
David. Patiently waiting, David Krebs, he, uh, he joined us as of yesterday. And, uh, um, so another one that has less seniority than Ron and myself. And, uh, but, uh, David comes to us from the, uh, Kent County Airport. Uh, he's had, uh, a very successful career there, and, uh, Karen and I met with him yesterday, and, uh, went over his budget and, uh, uh, some of the CIP stuff, and, uh, I gotta say, I, I believe he's, uh, excited to move forward and, you know, get some things done.
David, you wanna say anything at all? You just, you don't have to, don't, I don't wanna put you on the spot. But if you walk up to the podium, people will probably see your face.
Yeah, face with it.
You're gonna see a lot of me. Excited, thanks, uh, Gary, I'm excited to join the county. I have a lot to say, the day two. Fire hose, uh, but I'm excited to, uh, I like to give little class facilities to the public and, uh, I'm president of the county, I've done that at the airport for eight years. Um, so yeah, I'm just excited to be here and get this off all. It's great to meet you all and, and the public.
If you could dress up a little bit more professionally, I mean, we.
God, you could take some.
Like it, you're saying you.
Raising the bar.
Welcome aboard, welcome, glad to have you. All right. Ron?
First of all, thanks to all the commissioners. We're a very smooth process, we weren't exactly sure it was gonna be smooth, it turned out to be great. I just wanted to make a comment about next steps. Uh, we are going to be working on a schedule. Uh, the two events that, uh, I'm most concerned about right now are the citizen work group interviews, and then the board of commissioner interviews, both in open session. We're probably gonna be looking. We're probably going to be looking at the week of September 8th for some dates. We are debating whether or not to have those two interview sessions back to back or at least some time in between. We also are going to be considering the issue of lifting confidentiality and when that should be done. So those are the things coming up. And again, I appreciate the, the process today. It was, it was really good.
Thank you, Ron. All right, next thing on our commissioner comments and I want to start with you, Josh, this time.
Ooh.
I'll tour Joe.
Usually it's the other way around. I get to go. All right. Hey, I, well, listen to everybody here, Joe, Jordan, Allison, Jacob, Sylvia Kendra, going by names, John, Doug, Phil. Thank you all. Did I miss anybody?
Jim.
Jim. Well, I'm not thanking Jim. Everybody but Jim. Thank you all for that process that we just went through. Combination of Sylvia's initial idea with the vote by numbers. John and I talking about three minutes for everybody to give their general comments a pause and then voting by numbers. I hope that the candidate, the community and the candidates watching could see the collegiality that does exist up here. And it was just a remarkable thing. So thanks. Thank you all for being a part of that. Specific comments, just two, actually I think I just have one. With the importance of housing in Ottawa County being kind of on the top of the list. A couple of reports show that we need an additional 16,000 housing units in Ottawa County just to meet current demand. We have been through the appointment alignment committee and then Doug and I, Doug Zylestra and I have met with staff just to discuss what our housing commission group looks like, what the limitations are in the current format, whether or not it makes sense to expand the housing commission so that we can possibly do some more good in the community. So just wanted to introduce that, let everybody know that we're working on that. We're looking into it. And we'll come back at some point in time with a report, most likely through planning and policy or one of the other subcommittees. I think that's all I've got. Thank you again, all. Great job. And John, you did the lion's share of hard work getting everybody on the same page today. So thank you for your leadership.
Doug?
Yeah, I echo that. Thank you for the hard work you put in to organize this because it's not an easy task, not an easy lift. Two fun things from my district that I'd like to spotlight. One is the Critter Barn Derby that we just had. And if you've never been, it was my first time to see geese race, you know, or, or to see goats, you know, have it out as like little NASCARs. And so we had the Derby. It was fun. Young people engaged with the animals. They just really shined the whole staff. It was fun music, great food, fun drinks. So next year, make sure the Critter Barn Derby is on your schedule. And then we've got something coming up with Gentex and ODC's ribbon cutting for their partnership for their new childcare facility that they're opening up. My son and I drove around it. He's a young dad and he's dreaming about how he's going to raise his son and my grandson. And just the way that ODC, the Outdoor Discovery Center does things and teaches them about nature and counting. And, and the world that we live in is such a high level of education. It's a real blessing to have it in Zealand. And so really grateful for that and looking forward to that ribbon cutting.
When's the date on that?
The 19th of September.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, please come. Yeah.
I, I echo the Critter Barn Derby was a fantastic night and would be great to have more people at it next year. I just want to talk a little bit about the great news that we received in August 21 from the Department of Energy that affects our whole community. The Department of Energy extended their emergency declaration for the MISO grid, which allowed for the order to keep our Campbell plant open for another 90 days through November 19. Not sure if everyone's aware, but back in July, there was a Max Gen event. And the JH Campbell plant was greatly needed and it was used to avoid significant shortages to our MISO grid, which includes not only our state, but the entire Midwest region. There had been warnings given that if the US continues to take reliable power off the grid, power outages could increase by a hundred times in 2030. Reliable based loud power is important for families, businesses, public safety and our overall economy. Pausing and reassessing demonstrates safety and reliability are going to continue to be key in moving forward. So just wanted to provide that update. And then I recently attended a veterans event, a donut and coffee event at the Deli Belly Baker in Cooperstown. And I was encouraged by not only the turnout, but the quality of interactions I noticed between veterans and staff members. And then a plug for upcoming ag preservation event called Farms Are The Tapas is scheduled for Thursday evening, September 11th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Red Shed. I noticed that an invitation was sent out for the first time today by email to the board. It is something that is an invite to the public as well. So if you look up Farms Are The Tapas, or if you go online and look that up, we'd love to have you. And then there's a park store tour that's scheduled for September 11th. And any board member who has not been on that before, or even if you have, I just highly recommend going to that if it's, if you have that date available. So, and then just last, I just want to, personally, I want to thank John for reaching out. I'm going to have both a, a little bit of a warm and a little bit of a cool, mostly warm. My warm would be, I want to say thank you for meeting individually with commissioners or in groups to try to create a better process this time around for the administrative search. And I appreciate that greatly. One thing I, I just want to share is my cool feedback is I thought that we had had a wonderful meeting. So when you sat down specifically with me, Commissioner Rhodey, Commissioner Wenzel, Commissioner Berry, for our time together to share parts of our expertise or our recommendations for the process. I just wish that you hadn't ended the meeting with the threat of putting letter E on here. I felt like we had had an amazing interaction together. And so to me, that broke a little bit of the trust personally. And so I would just encourage you to think about that in the future. But overall, great process that we had today. I was very thankful for how well we worked together. So thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to again, remind everyone, make sure it's on their radar about the state budget in Lansing. We're about a month away from the end of the fiscal year. Right now, there's no budget deal. We can debate on whether or not there's one nearly on the horizon. But I think, you know, we've got great staff and we've got staff that has prepared for this in the past. And I just, just want to make sure everyone knows we might be having to prepare for that in the future. So stay tuned for what's coming out of Lansing. But that's something to stay aware of too, because eventually if the state budget doesn't get passed, it can affect some of our operations. The other thing I got to do yesterday, I got to take a tour of the Holland Township Community Center, brand new. It hasn't even formally been opened, but they are open. They've had a soft launch and it was awesome. It's an amazing facility. First of all, so if you have a chance, you should go tour it. It's right on the backside of the West Shore Mall. So it's right in the middle of town. It's easily accessible to, to everybody. They've got awesome facilities there. They've got a basketball court, six pickleball courts, an indoor track. They've got gym equipment. And yeah, for Holland Township residents, membership's a little bit cheaper and they have a senior discount too. So it was awesome to see people in there using the facility. It's beautiful. But I would just encourage everybody to go check it out if you can. And that's it.
Yeah, I'd like to highlight for the board and for the county, a pretty hot topic right now in my, in my district in Blendon. And I know there's been talk about it, but I'd like to make sure that I add a little bit of clarity because I've received so many phone calls and messages about the Blendon Township battery farm that is being talked about. Most recently, there was a township meeting last week, which was packed wall to wall with people. Residents either from Blendon or, or very close by who are very unhappy with this battery farm that's being proposed. The fact that this has come up, lithium battery storage in Blendon was, was a big surprise to people. This process has been going on now for, you know, over a year, maybe a little more, but, but no one really had very, very much awareness of it. So now it has gained a lot more awareness. The company that owns the facilities that they're proposing is, is called Key Capture. They are apparently owned by a company, a foreign company in, in South Korea. Other kind of major issues that have been talked about related to the owner of the, the farmland that they're looking to repurpose is actually also a member of the Blendon Township Planning Commission, which approved or which is looking at the project, which a lot of people are very unhappy that the person who's on the commission is also the landowner. There's a lot of public safety concerns and that includes from county officials. There's, there's fire concerns. What happens if you have a fire? Well, you can't put out lithium fires. You have to let it burn. What happens related to water quality? If there's a fire and you're spraying water everywhere around, will heavy metals leach into the soil? Will they get into the aquifer? What, what is the potential risk? There's air quality and evacuation risks. So if there's a fire, it could be a toxic plume. And, and this particular spot is right near homes and farms. And so the neighbors are very concerned. Another issue that has been discussed is the local schools. There are some schools that are nearby. And even if you look at where Grand Valley is, it's only maybe six miles or seven miles or something like that as the crow flies. So a lot going on. A lot of this stems from 2023. The Democrats in Lansing passed a very controversial and bad law that stripped local control away from our local municipalities and making decisions about these battery, battery farms and things like that. So residents of Blendon are, have been asking the planning commission and the board in Blendon to oppose the installation, to delay the project as best they can, to take whatever steps they can. And are watching to see, you know, how they respond. And last but not least, if, if you'd like, if anyone would like more information on this, I'd be happy to talk about it. There's a lot more details, a lot of other questions. And there's also a Facebook page called Blendon Bulletin, if you'd like to get more info.
Yeah, I, I think the battery plants will be more, we have to deal with down the road. I mean, Campbell wants that too. So it's, it's just something we're going to have to deal with society. And, you know, I haven't heard both sides of the story. I've only heard negative so far. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing more research and information on that. And, and kudos to the board today for the process we went through and, and doing a good job of heading forward to find administrators. So thank you.
Yeah, no, so I repeat what basically I almost said, you know, I think this is a great process. Appreciate staff and Justin and everyone else who made that happen. Yeah, I'm excited about the next stage and excited to get to administrators like everybody else. So.
Jim?
Let me join in thanking John and Ron and staff for putting this all together with this, a very constructive process we had today. And I'm very pleased with how that all went. I also wanted to just take a second to make mention that on Thursday evening, had dinner with Commissioners Kyers, Bruegger and Bonama at Noodles and Company. It was a fundraiser for the Ottawa County Community Action Agency, where I think it was 25% of proceeds that day were going, were being given to the agency. I don't know if they raised a lot of money, but hopefully they got a little more high profile and got some attention from it. And I'm glad to see we had a turnout of commissioners there to support that. Talk about the budget issues in Lansing. I think that's a, that's an agency that's really going to feel the sharp edge of the knife when those cuts come. And so if anything we can do to kind of support the work they're doing, trying to help families that are trying to get, get steady footing again, I'm all for that. But.
Jordan, Jordan was there too. So I just want to, he let us off. Yeah.
You were gone by.
I think it's in your district too. So I want to make sure you, yeah, you're showing love.
So I'm sorry.
The food was really good.
It's in Jordan's district.
I'd just have an update from Veterans Affairs. One of our veteran services officer had sent me an overview of something that had happened that he had been working on. In March of 25, a veteran visited our, our offices regarding an agent org claim for illness that had been denied in 2012. And then new information had come forward that he might possibly be eligible. So that VSO worked with him a long time to try to get this completed. So I'm going to read what he had sent me. The vet told our VSO that he had, he was only doing this for his wife. He had pulled him aside and said, basically they were losing everything. They were in need of funds and things were really hard right now. And it had cost him so much. He wanted to leave her something in case he didn't survive. He also told him that, or the VSO told him that he had him in his corner now and that he would fight for him until we got, he got through to the end of it. His ships, initially his ship's deck logs showed no presence within the 12 mile nautical limit required for presumptive herbicide exposure. He actually was part of the Blue Water Navy and he was on the coast of Vietnam. Further research revealed the ship had resupplied destroyers known to operate within that range. The VSO located the deck logs from the destroyers confirming the replenishments took place within the 12, 12 area NM zone, as well as cruise book photos showing the ship's proximity to the Vietnamese coast. Based on the body of evidence, the VA conceded exposure. So they granted 0% rating for one condition, but shortly after they awarded him a 100% disability rating. Because of the original 2012 claim was erroneously denied, the VA assigned the effective date retroactively, resulting in over $517,000 in back pay and securing, securing long-term benefits under the 10-year protection rule. He was, he's also receiving on top of that $4,100 a month. His wife is now eligible for dependency and indemnity, indemnity compensation upon his passing and will continue to receive state level tax exemptions. Our VSO personally called the couple to deliver the news and explain their new benefits, as well as encourage them to seek financial planning. He asked the veteran's wife to reach out right away if anything happened to her husband so that further support could be provided. Privately, the VSO spoke to the veteran and told him that he had succeeded in taking care of his wife after he was gone. That was his biggest concern. The veteran replied that they had been on the brink of losing everything to medical debt, but now they were going to be okay and could finally afford something as simple and as meaningful as a new bed. An appeal will be filed to secure permanent and total status as the veteran's conditions are incurable. The VSO remains ready to support him every step of the way. So I thought that was a huge win for them.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Amazing. Just a couple of thoughts. I'm, I'm really excited to see that we have some excellent candidates in our pool to be interviewing. So really thankful for that. I pretty much echo to the word Commissioner Miedema's comments. So thank you for, for sharing those, including her thoughts about this process. I wanted to share, I know you had mentioned it, the nine one one call center has a new director. And I'm just there as well, just super pleased with the quality of the individual that we have running the center now. He comes from Kent County with a tremendous, tremendous amount of experience. So the committee did a great job in choosing him. Let's see, I'm also share Commissioner Moss's concerns about what's happening in Blendon Township, particularly with the close proximity of Alenda Public School facilities and Grand Valley. You know, if there were a potential incident there. So continue to keep my eyes on that situation as well as the Campbell plant. So thank you for sharing that update, Mr. Miedema. And that's about all I have.
So let me wrap it up. I'd like to thank everybody so far that's in this process. I was walking from my, up on the parking lot in this morning and I was just thinking and about everybody doing their jobs. There's so much, there's so much skill here in this county, besides the goodwill to make this happen. And people don't realize how much work went into this. And, and it's just people doing their jobs and you guys are really good at it. So I wanted to commend you guys. The only other comment I want to make is to the people in the public at large. I know there are a lot of issues that we need to address as a board, that we've been in some ways pushing back, trying to get this process, the administrative process taken care of. We know it. We, we know it. And, and that there's things that are going to get addressed by the board in the next couple of sessions. So, so just know we, we're well aware of our responsibilities and our.
Uh, and our commitment to this county. Um, things will get worked out. Thanks for being patient. We'll get there. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.